All right.
All right. Thank you, everybody for coming to the January 11th, 2022 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Just real quick for our records, this is a web-based call and we're operating under the following procedures. The meeting is being audio and video recorded and a recording of this video will be available within 24 hours and will be posted to the Town of Waterford's Planning Department website. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for the meeting is that everyone will remain on mute unless they're speaking. If anyone creates an audio or visual disruption, the Zoom moderator may place them on mute or remove them from the meeting if the disruption continues. We will not use the chat feature in this meeting. We appreciate your attendance. Should you have any questions about the process, please call our staff at 860-444-5813 between 8:00 AM and 4:00 PM, Monday to Friday.
Okay, great. So this should be a quick meeting, but I, we talked about it last week, me and Abby, about whether to cancel it or go forward, but I thought maybe we could just kick off the P O C D, you know, package and if we do nothing else. So with item number one, we have any alternates? No, we do have a quorum. It was just connecting now. So we'll have four. Item number two, approval of the December 14th, 21 meeting minutes.
A move approval of the minutes?
A second.
That was John and Ken. All in favor approving the December 14th, 2021 meeting minutes? Hi.
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 Hi, Tim. Welcome, Tim. And no, no negatives. So item number three, receipt of applications. We don't have any, right?
No, we don't.
Any correspondence for number four?
No.
No vision?
Nope. Mission Business, number five, just a review of the past projects and upcoming projects. Do a quick rundown on that?
Yep. So super quick. Many of them you've heard of before, so we're not going to linger. There is the zone change for 61 My Rock Avenue and a preliminary review to come through for multifamily, the next phase of multifamily developments out of the Waterford Woods. So carrying forward through to the former broadband property. The self-storage application, there's an application that the zoning board of appeals and will then move its way through conservation at the corner of Cross Road and 85 for a self-storage project. So that will be coming. Waterford Heights, Met Cross Road and 85, the multifamily project we've talked about a few times is coming in for review. So that was technically, I think Mark was receiving on the 21st, correct? So that meeting was canceled, but that receipt date was the 21st. So they'll be, they'll be scheduling their time to make their site plan presentation to you. 118 Boston Post Road, which is the gas station sort of in front of the Aldies. They are working their way through the zoning board of appeals right now for a few variance requests that they have and then would be coming in for a reconstruction of that, that gas station and convenience store location. And that would be a site plan application. We just had a preliminary meeting with the new owner of the former Sunset Rivers property this today, and that is moving forward. They're in preliminary design phases right now and we're excited to see a potential new restaurant come in that's flood compliant, that operates as a higher end seafood establishment, which is great. So that'll come in as a site plan amendment. Now they're working through some of the land issue, land issues, parking entitlements, and some of that kind of stuff that is particular to that property. So they're going through that process now. We also expect an amended application in for Sunset Landing, the seasonal facility just across the way there. And we're speaking with the engineer and property owner for that property about the various things that they're looking for in terms of clarifying uses and some things they'll be asking for in terms of keeping some trailers and some things there off-season, which wasn't part of their original site plan application. The airport property is still in play. We're expecting an application to come in sometime within the next couple of months, but it's, yep, we're just waiting. So that that will come in when it does as a site plan application. Mark, do you have any others?
No, no, that's all.
So a question on the Waterford Woods, Abby, is that, that's gonna have a separate entrance on My Rock Avenue, the next one?
So we haven't seen final plans yet. Preliminary discussions that we had with them many, many months ago indicated that they may try to put together a boulevard type of combined access to the new apartments and make it off of Willets and have that be the primary in and out so that it would essentially be kind of a boulevard down to where the clubhouse approval just just occurred and then go from there so that they would try to avoid having traffic go through a neighborhood. We haven't seen those final designs yet, but that's the the sort of concept that they were going with, but what they need first because they have commercially zone and residentially zone property, but they don't have anything that would accommodate multifamily. So they want to continue the commercial multifamily district over to allow them to just have that first part of the entitlements. So.
Did we scare off?
Oh, sorry.
Did we scare off the ice cream shop there and stop and shop?
No, not at all.
No. All right.
I think they're thinking your feedback and kind of figuring out how they're going to meet some of the standards and address some of the questions. But no, they, I think they, they got the, the message that the folks are welcome. They just want to make sure the standards get met and they're working on it.
Okay.
Yep.
Great. Any other questions on any of those projects? Nope. Okay. That's a lot. That seems to be a bunch of new stuff tonight.
It's busy. I think that there's, yeah, it's, it's going to be a busy season between that and the other projects going on. So.
Item number six, scope of work for the upcoming plan of conservation and development.
Now, I can put this, I'm going to stick this up on the screen so folks can. Can everybody see what I see?
Yep.
All right. So we had shared this, this draft scope for the plan of conservation and development, I think a few meetings ago, and wanted to give folks, you know, just the chance to take a look at it and give any feedback. We've been through a couple rounds on this. And it looks like Karen is actually coming in right now. We've gone through a couple of rounds on this at the staff level, but what we're trying to do is get to a point where the RFP, the sort of guts of the RFP, which are these next pages are, are in order and that the commission supports the project and scope the way that it's written. What will happen is once the commission has approved a scope and has basically authorized staff to go put this out for RFP, we'll give it to our town purchasing agent. He'll put the front-end town general information on it and then that will go out and be advertised for a few weeks. At the end of that, we'll have a bunch of proposals from consultants and then we'll talk in the next stage of this about how we, we proceed forward with making a selection and getting the project started. So relative to this, what we've tried to do is just pull together a general scope and then some parameters of work and basic goals. So we want to make sure that whoever we get is obviously experienced in this work, is really up to date and current on some of the recent changes that we're seeing coming through the legislation. So, and then someone who can help us make sure that we're hitting certain goals such as being compliant with the Sustainable Connecticut Program because Waterford is a bronze certified town. So we're trying to maintain that. So there's a couple of parameters in here that we just wanted to make sure much more focus on equity and inclusion and those types of things as well. So, so this is definitely a focus of this project. So I won't bore you by going through the entire scope. But basically what we have is a general scope and then what are the deliverables that the commission wants to see at the end. And so obviously a statutorily compliant plan, but I think one of the things that we also want to get out of this as staff is a really sort of interactive, you know, easily shareable, sort of modern feel, GIS friendly plan that we can, you know, use on a, on a routine basis that we can use in our, you know, evaluations, but also that we can share with folks and it becomes a little bit more of a living document. So we want that to certainly be in place. The other part of this is really looking at the public engagement strategy and, and wanting to be as inclusive as we can to reach as many folks as we can, you know, and really make a very concerted effort to get as many voices included in this plan as possible. So that's the, that's the general scope. And then I had shared earlier this evening, and I apologize for the late, late reach out, Greg, but had got, I put together just a quick overview of potential organization and timeline for the project. So one of the things that this project will need is really a committee. Ultimately, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the public hearing and adopt the plan. And that is, that is part of this commission's charge statutorily. And so it will ultimately be in front of everyone. One of the questions that we need to answer with, with the group tonight, hopefully, is whether or not this work is work that you want to be done entirely within the Planning and Zoning Commission and sort of inviting folks in as, as it proceeds for specialty sort of topic, topical conversations, or whether you would like to, given the amount of work that we have upcoming, assign one or two representatives from the, from the Planning and Zoning Commission to serve on a core committee that also includes members from other boards and commissions. My, my recommendation is five, no more than seven people because it becomes very unwieldy. We will still be having, regardless of how the committee goes, there's going to be breakout sessions, there'll be specialty conversations about utilities and infrastructure and, you know, open space and all that kind of stuff. This is really about what do you want the committee who is charged with the bulk of the work and bringing the plan to fruition? Where do you want that responsibility to primarily lie? So there's that question. And then timeline, I just tried to let, you know, sort of lay out a general idea of what to expect with this. We're trying to leave a decent amount of time for revisions and again, for that public engagement strategy. So if we were to be able to finalize the scope this month and be able to select and award a contract by the end of March, we could begin in April. One of the things that that does is it gets us started before the summer season and people are kind of off, but it also gives us the summer season when people are out and about and at the beach and doing other things. It gives us some opportunities for some more creative outreach and kind of going to where people are. So that's, that was kind of the, the thought process. And then to come back in the fall and at that point, issue plans and move forward. So, and then the other reason for this is it'll give us some time during the kickoff of this project, the commission will be winding down work on the affordable housing plan, which is due to the state June 1. And so we'll be able to be ending that project and really gearing up the bulk of the work for this one. So that's kind of a basic overview. And I think the things that, that we need to hear a staff from the commission is, you know, is the scope okay the way it is or do you want to see changes?
Well, do we have that document?
I thought it should have been sent to you in a previous package of stuff.
I think Mark might have emailed it out before our last meeting or the meeting before that.
Mark did, okay.
And I can, we can certainly resend it at the end of this meeting too. So that would work too.
I do have, thank you, Tim. I do have that. I was looking under Abby and, all right. But didn't, weren't you, didn't that say 16 pages or something? Doesn't the, the slide you're showing?
Oh, the slide, no, the slide I'm showing is the entire package of tonight's meeting. So I do, I put the agenda, the minutes, I put all that together. So, so if we ever wanted to look at anything. So that, this is just a subset of that whole meeting package.
Okay, I have that. Then I, I was looking for a 16-page document.
No, no, this is, this is a three-page scope. The actual RFP as it goes out to the public for, for consultants to review would be longer. It would have all the towns, you know, liability elements and all of our normal bidding language and that kind of stuff. This is just this, this is, this is the real focus of the meat of the project and what the commission wants to see as a result.
Okay. So I think we need to try to find out what we want to do for the committee. You know, I think we definitely need to have some input from the different places, but if we're charged with it, I don't, I don't know why we would not have a planning commission, which is us be the, the committee and then have the different special interests, if you will, the conservation commission, their thoughts, the board of finance, their thoughts, the economic development as ad hoc members. But if, if we don't do that, then we're at the mercy, these different commissions appointing whoever they want on it. And I don't know, I just, I don't know if I feel comfortable with that. I think that if, if our names are on it as the Planning and Zoning Commission, we're charged with it. We should probably guide the direction of it because we, we know everything that's going on with the town in terms of planning and development and where people are interested and what problems that we have in terms of the zoning regulations and the planning issues. And not problems, but the issues that arise. And, and I think that we're probably the best people suited for it with the input of the different commissions. And I don't even think it's just these three commissions. I think it's, you know, the RT, we need to hear from the RTN, we need to hear from Parks and Rec, we need to hear from, you know, all the, the youth services bureau. We need to, need to hear from a lot of different people.
Absolutely.
But I think we're the ones that should hear from them. That's just, I thought I, can you take that down, Abby? So like? Everybody have any thoughts on that? I'm just going to get this off the printer.
I, I think I agree with that. You know, I'd be happy to see our commission do it. And yeah, and also if we were to go with the, the other option of, of, you know, picking two or three of us to go serve on another commission, that's our committee, that's sort of a, another time commitment for everyone here. So I think keeping it with our commission is a good idea.
Welcome, Karen. I didn't see you there behind the exhibit before.
Sorry, I'm late. No, my alarm didn't go off. I was chatting. I realized, oh, I'm late. So you guys got through a lot of items before I got.
Yeah, it was, it was an interesting update. If you want to get that later from Abby, there were a lot of projects. I don't know if you've heard that part of it, but Tristan Town. So that's, that's good. Anybody else have any comments on the committee's structure?
I think I'm in agreement with you and Greg and Tim. Just, I think it should be our own, you know, we're in charge of it. We should stay in charge of it and bring in the appropriate people to weigh in on it versus, you know, giving, you know, giving others the opportunity for it to, to move it in their direction, as you said, Greg. So I'm in agreement.
I served briefly on, well, not briefly, I served on a plan of conservation development East Line at one point. And there was a lot of people and it just, it was all different interests. It was kind of almost unwieldy. You've got a great finished product, but it was, I agree with Abby, keeping it probably the five members or so, as long as we get the input from everyone else, make the decision. Karen or John?
No, I really don't have anything to add to what everybody else has said. I think you, I think it should be kept within the, in the commission.
Okay. All right. So.
That's, that's fine with me. I mean, if it's going to come back to us anyway, we may as well.
All right. So is that good enough?
Perfect.
All right. Anybody have any issues with the timeline? Or the scope? I guess, I guess anybody have any issues with the scope? No?
No. I thought the scope was sufficiently broad enough to cover the areas that need to be covered. I'm glad to see that we're adding requirement for GIS data for use in future planning activities, making it a little more modern than some of the previous plan. But I thought it was a pretty good scope personally.
Do we expect a lot of, a lot of bidders on this? I mean, how many firms are out there that do this?
There's, there's a number. I mean, there's a few that, you know, kind of have the corner on the market in the state that you see kind of over and over again. But there is, there's a, I would expect we'd get a pretty decent response. We do have a healthy budget for this project. And so, and the money's already been appropriated. So there would be no delay in going out and moving to contract award. You know, I'd be, I'd be hopeful that we would get at least five or six different companies to apply. That would be useful. What we'll do, and when, when we know more about how many responses are coming in, we may look at a sort of matrix and we can, I can work with you to kind of call it down. So the commission's time is best spent on those applicator, those proposals that are going to best fit. So we'll, we'll work through how we do that.
And then the contractor knows how much we have budgeted?
Um, it's public information because it is part of a capital budget. So they could figure it out. We don't typically announce what that is though, in the RFP or any of that kind of stuff, just for, for that purpose.
Okay. What kind of GIS data would we get in the end of this?
So the future land use plan, if we do any build-out analysis, if we are, you know, looking at any particular natural resources elements and are able to digitize some more of our wetland stuff, that would be helpful and kind of pull that into some of the planning elements. Things that show future pedestrian connections. So if somebody's doing a development in an area where it's supposed to be sort of tied together, we can kind of figure that out, those, those types of things. Just that we can throw the, the P O C D layer on top of somebody's application or rezoning effort or any of the policy decision that gets made. And then we can just start to look at it in a little bit more of a cohesive manner. It just kind of helps us, you know, sort of, I mean, you're familiar with, you're familiar with GIS. So you, you know, how the layering and decision-making works. It'll just kind of make it a little faster to visualize for folks.
Okay.
So no other issues with the scope? Any issues with the timeline? So you want to put it out, you want to put this scope out right now, right? And then we're giving them what, 30 days to get back to us?
Typically, yeah. Typically, it's about three weeks or so if we want to do 30 days on this because it's a larger project and we really want to get a good response. We can sort, we can leave it out. I wouldn't leave it out for longer than that, but I think that's, that's reasonable. It doesn't have to be that long. We could, we could do it. Two weeks, I think is too short. We could do three weeks. Then, once we get the proposals back, so they all kind of get sent directly to the purchasing agent, we stay out of it. Once everything is in and that bid sort of session has closed, he'll present us with those copies. And so we'll talk about how many hard copies we need and all that kind of stuff. And, and we'll go from there. I think most of what we want to try to do is digital, just because people produce so much paper for this. And, and so we'll, we'll try to sort of do that. But if we have any top contenders, we'll see if we can get, you know, sort of additional paper materials for the group out of that if we need to. So that was kind of my thought is that everybody provides a digital copy. And then I would say, you know, six printed copies of whatever they're doing. That way every, you know, regular member of the commission gets one. And then one for staff to share and then we can use digital and that's, that'll be fine too.
Abby, is it possible to get a copy of the current, current plan or no?
It is. Yeah, we can get your hard copy. It is up on our website. So you can see the 20 people plan plus the 15 supplement. If you go onto the planning department website under land use regulations, there's a sidebar on our planning page and you can get to it from there. But we can, I'll send you the link after the meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, so timeline looks good to me. Anybody else have any issue with the timeline? No? Okay, so that sounds good. About the next one, the potential updates, updates to the accessory dwelling unit regulations?
Yep. So we just wanted to check in with everybody on this one. As, as folks know, originally tonight was scheduled to be our public hearing for the opt-out with a legal notice with a 2021 date on it. So we had to redo the legal notice. So that will be, that's scheduled now for the 25th. Once we hold that hearing, the next step of this is for it to go to the February RTM meeting. And one of the things that the commission discussed was when, if, if the, if the commission does, in fact, after holding the public hearing, opt out of the statute or vote to recommend that the town opt out, it would be useful to have a direction in which the accessory dwelling unit regulations are going so that folks don't feel as though the town is simply opting out and keeping what we have because what we have is fairly unwieldy and doesn't really fit the needs of the folks who are looking for, for potential units. So we had given folks, you know, sort of a draft of potential regulations and there's some general policy discussion that we wanted to have about where this is kind of headed. We don't have to have a final copy or, you know, anything obviously ready to be adopted because we couldn't adopt the regulations until after the opt-out. But at least having a solid draft, I think goes a long way to helping, especially the conversation at the RTM. And also for the, so the public understands that the intent was never to opt out and do nothing. The intent was to opt out and adopt something that was similar to the, the state legislation. So we have the draft that was previously provided. One of the conversations that has come up fairly recently with Mark and I is some folks who are looking to, it's a potential agricultural exemption that if somebody has a farm of a certain size in town, could they be exempted from the accessory dwelling unit provisions so that they could do something like put another single family home up and not be restricted by the thousand square foot or 30% size limitations? So we wanted to gauge the commission's interest in, in having that conversation and pursuing an agricultural exemption. We haven't done a full analysis yet of how many properties that would affect and kind of what that might look like. But we just kind of wanted to do a litmus test of if folks who, who are part of a working farm wanted to build another dwelling on the, on the property, so they could potentially have an apartment in one, in one building and another detached. So the, so the conversation has been, you know, could we give permissions for a farm to have up to one attached and one detached accessory dwelling on the property? And so it's, it's a policy question. There's not that many properties for which it would qualify, but there are things that, you know, to, to consider about it. It's kind of a, subverts a little bit the subdivision regulation and folks wanting to sort of have a, another single family home on a property, but it also supports agricultural operations where it's a family operation and they want to keep things kind of close, close to home, or they may want to create some housing for seasonal workers or that kind of stuff. So we can talk through it, but we just wanted to, you know, just at least put it up the flagpole and see what people think.
Yeah. One of the things to keep in mind too is that doesn't necessarily have to be the same size of the principal building that's already out there. So it can still be accessory and be greater than the 30% that, you know, you know, that's, that the legislation requires for max. So maybe looking at maybe 50% of the, of the principal building or 70% of the principal building, something, something like that to still, to still keep its accessory qualifications being less than the principal building in terms of size.
I think that we should at least entertain it. I think it would be, we'd be remiss to just dismiss it without even listening to see what they have to say. But I, on things like that, I don't know what everyone else thinks, but I don't think this, you guys should be drafting this stuff. If somebody wants to come with us with a proposal, I mean, I think they should do a lot of the work, right? Or, or, or you guys?
Well, I think it's, this is sort of the precursor to those two things. One, if if we are already in the process of adopting this section of regulation and it's a short lift to add in an exemption for agricultural properties, then it would make sense from a commission organizational perspective, just to get it done. If, if it's something that the commission widely supports. If it is something that is going to take a whole significant amount of analysis or other pieces, the commission could go forward with the draft, you know, as we've already created it in response to the legislation and the opt-out. And then, you know, someone could come back subsequent to that and ask for to be amended for an exemption. It was sort of an, it's an opportunity for us to consider whether or not the commission would want to sponsor such a thing or whether it's, you know, there, there's not been an overwhelming number of folks coming in asking for this. There's this one parcel right now. So the commission should be aware of that too. So we're not trying to get out, you know, have folks get out of doing their work, but we also are trying to, if we're already looking at something, at least run it up with you guys first.
Any comments on it?
I just have one quick question. Is the intent that the house would be occupied as someone associated to the farm? Or is this an extra stream of income for the farm?
So the way that we've drafted the current supplement, the current, you know, new regulations would follow state statute in which there wouldn't be a familial requirement to that. So it could be for additional income. It could be for family. It could be for workers and employee housing. Any of those things could be possible, depending on how you write it. You, you could write in some of these other elements. Since we're opting out, we wouldn't be subject to the, the no restrictions on, on relationship between occupants of the primary and accessory dwellings. I think that's something the commission would need to, to kind of talk about. We hadn't contemplated putting in sort of a familial relationship just because that stuff can get really murky, number one. And number two, when the property sells, you know, that makes the sale a little bit more difficult.
How many, how many accessories buildings could you have on the property, you know, depending on the size? I mean, can you have as many as you want? As long as they meet under the 30% or whatever, whatever the?
Yeah, for, for a farm, you, you could have many. But an accessory dwelling unit, we could cap the number on.
Is there any other use other than agriculture that this would apply to? Or just, are you just thinking about agricultural as the exemption?
So far, we've only thought of agricultural as, as the exemption because that was, that's what came to us around the holidays. And so we didn't, you know, it's not, it's a little bit of a reactionary conversation to figure, you know, to sort of figure out if it's something worth pursuing. You know, there's certainly the argument of supporting agriculture and trying to keep land use regulations as flexible as possible surrounding our farms and kind of promoting and supporting that history in town. There's also, you know, muddying the waters and whether or not folks want to go down that road or want someone to have to bring that to the commission. So that's.
Yeah. Determining the, the agricultural exemption is fairly, is fairly eased across town. So if, if, if a parcel based on the assessors, the assessor's office, almost says as a parcel in the Public Act 490 category, working farm, working forestry, something, something along those regards, if it's, if it's a PA 490 or a Public Act 490 parcel, that's easy enough to determine from the, from the assessor's records.
So would the idea be then that they would get, you know, the accessory unit as of right that they, the access that they get? And then this one? And then this would be something in addition to that. You know, a second, single family home, just as long as it's smaller than the one that's already existing there.
Correct, correct, the the idea, the idea being that they wouldn't be subject to the only one dwelling unit type on the property, the way that the other residential properties would be.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I'm certainly, you know, willing to to listen to any proposal.
One, and one thing that may be worthwhile is to ask them to come to the public hearing and to to, you know, sort of give their their feedback and their input on that during that time. And give you a little bit more of a sense of what their their story is. Again, we, the the commission's not obligated by any means to have final draft regulations by the time of the public hearing. It's just sort of what direction are we, we potentially heading in?
Is there, is there a? Minimum size of the farm contemplated?
Wait, Mark and I have been batting around some ideas of of not just the three acres that is sort of the zoning minimum. But, you know, somebody who's got like ten or more acres who, you know, really has a substantial piece of property so that you can really buffer it from the neighbors. And that, you know, that would also, you know, potentially, you know, making sure we don't exempt from things like. The setbacks or, you know, height restrictions or any of any of that kind of stuff. Yeah, and then again, most of these, you know, would be taking place on land, excuse me, potentially in RU one twenty district. So obviously they would have to meet all the health provisions in terms of a B one hundred A and and getting ledge light approval for septic.
I mean, is there any preexisting nonconforming that we know already or exist? That, you know, would be something similar to what? This would be. Is there anything out there already?
I'm not aware, I'm sure we could dig, I don't know, Mark, if you're aware of any that are.
No, no, I did a quick run through. Of of all the PA four ninety. Land that we have in town, all the parcels that fall under that category. And I came up with a quick. We've got a hundred and sixty total of parcels that fall under that category. Of which. Forty-four already have single family homes on them. Including in-law apartments within those single family homes. So there are forty-four potentials out there. The fall under the forty, the that are classified as forestry of forest land or. Farming. Farm acres or forest acres is how, is how they classify it. So forty-four parcels. With a single family on them.
Okay, any other? Comments on it? I think the general gist is. We're open to a proposal, right? Okay. Okay. The only other thing now is we have approval of the budget, I'm sorry, annual report, sorry.
This is just, this is a cleanup item that we we are just due to have a vote on as soon as folks feel comfortable with the report.
Right, Ken, did you take a look at it? You, it was one of your concerns last time.
Yeah, I looked at it after the meeting and and I think I had already seen it before, so. I'm, I'm okay with everything.
Okay, anybody have any other comments or we wrote on it? Right, all in favor of adopting the, and approving the fiscal year twenty-one annual report? Motion in a second.
I'll second that.
Motion by John, second by Tim, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have anything else before adjournment?
Yeah, I I have one quick thing. I had mentioned before that I was going to, I was looking to get off of the commission. And I sent an email out to Abby and to Greg earlier today and copied Dawn on it. I think this is going to be my last meeting. I've done this for about five years. I want to get off the commission at a time before large applications start coming in. And then I don't want to have, you know, find myself dropping out in the middle of public hearings. Where somebody else has to come in and get caught up to speed. So I think this is a good time, things are a little quiet at this particular moment. It's been a great run. I think I've done it for about five years and you guys have been great as a staff. Great as a commission. And it's been, it's been a lot of fun, learned a lot from all of you and I really appreciate it. So this, I think this will be it.
Well, I'm, as I said in your email today, I I'm sorry to see you go. I think you've been a a steady hand throughout this commission and, you know, I was talking to somebody today and I said, you know. This commission or the town doesn't, I don't have, we don't have any land use litigation against us, do we?
No, one, one old case that just keeps hanging out there, but we're careful now, it's, yeah.
But for the most part, I think that's something to be proud of and John, you've been here for five years and you're, you know. One of the reasons why that's the case, like that's, I think that's impressive. I think most towns are, get sued, I don't know. They might know too, but I I think that, you know, that we don't have any against us is is a pretty, it's a pretty good thing.
Yeah, I think my, my only, my only regret is I think you guys are. Poised for some really exciting and interesting things coming up, coming up with the P O C D, the affordable housing. Things, I think there's some really interesting things coming your way. And. I I think it's a, it's, it's a great team that you got to to consider this stuff as it comes along, so. Yeah, I think you guys are going to have some fun times coming up, I hope.
Thanks for the service, John.
So happy, happy to do so.
And with that. Enjoyed working with you, John.
Thank you, same here, I'm here for all of you, everybody. And like I said.
Yeah, thanks so much, John.
Yeah, I've learned an awful lot.
Yeah. We got anything, anything else?
With that, I'll make my last motion.
I don't know what I'm going to do now, I can't say motion by John anymore. I'm in motion, man. Seconded by anybody?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye.
Stay warm and I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Take care.
Hey, John, we'll see you.
See you, John.
Thanks, John.
Yep, bye bye.